Thirty, I believe, so we'll go ahead and get started. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Meyer, will you please do a roll call for us?
Certainly. President McIntyre.
I'm here this evening.
Vice President Kemba Whitel.
Hi, I'm here.
Treasurer Stewart.
Here.
Secretary Meyer, I'm here. Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Rigenmauer asked an excuse.
Okay, thank you so much. We are joined also by our superintendent, Dr. RJ Weber, our amazing administrative cult team, and we also have some lovely members in the audience tonight, so everybody, welcome. Let's go ahead and start with our adoption of our agenda.
All right, I'm happy to bring motion nine, that the agenda be adopted as presented. Support.
Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Kemba Whitel, supported by Ms. Meyer. Questions, comments? Nope, okay, let's move ahead with the vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our consent resolutions. I will pass that over.
All right, and there was quite a list, so I'll read them and take a breath now and then. I am happy to bring motion ten, that the board accept the consent agenda items as follows. Five A, minutes of the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Education meeting. Five B, middle school science materials totaling thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Five C, update the committee of the whole meeting's start time to six PM on August nineteenth at Old Village School. Five D, overnight and/or out-of-state field trip requests. One, NHS Girls Golf Tournament in Allendale, Michigan from September twenty-five through twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Two, NHS Girls Golf Tournament in Allendale, Michigan from October sixteen through eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Three, NHS varsity hockey trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan from February thirteen through fourteen, twenty twenty-six. Four, NHS varsity hockey trip to Columbus, Ohio from November fourteen through sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Five, NHS Hockey Team Building in Glen Arbor, Michigan from July twenty-eighth through thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Six, NHS varsity hockey tournament in Traverse City, Michigan from December twenty-eighth through thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Seven, Northville Rowing National Championship in Sarasota, Florida from June two through seven, twenty twenty-six. Eight, Northville Rowing National Championship in Camden, New Jersey from May twenty-one through twenty-four, twenty twenty-six. Nine, Northville Rowing Training Trip in Oak Ridge, Tennessee from March twenty-eight through April fourth, twenty twenty-six. Ten, NHS AP Environmental Science Trip to Oscoda, Michigan from September twenty-eight through thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Eleven, Boys Volleyball Tournament in Grand Rapids, Michigan on April twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. And twelve, Northville Singers Cedar Point Music Festival in Sandusky, Ohio on May twenty-two, twenty twenty-six. The final item is bill warrants totaling four million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
Lots of work.
Okay.
I'll support that. Okay, thank you. Who's gonna support? That's a lot of things. We all caught it. Hopefully, there's a lot of items, a lot of busyness happening in our school district looking at those, yeah, all the different field trips from the summer all the way through next May through the end of next school. So, amazing, thank you for bringing that forward. Yeah, I guess for the community, these are really administrative in nature. We've seen these under other covers, other conversations, so this is procedural. And any comments, questions anybody needs to make? Okay. All right, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Kemba Whitel, supported by Ms. Stewart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, flipping then to our communications.
Yes, we have received communications at MPSBOE and northvilleschoolers.schools.org.
Thank you so much. Next, Dr. Weber, the superintendent.
Yes, thank you very much, President McIntyre. First off, we'll start with an enrollment update from Ms. Peck, and then I'm gonna ask for some discretion. I have three small add-on pieces. One will be about AI that we talked about about a month and a half ago. One will be Fox Two News, and the other will be Color My World, but we'll capture that in the minutes. Ms. Peck, enrollment.
Okay, it's that time of year, things are moving fast and furious, right? So, we've had some conversations about enrollment when we did the rollover in June. Since then, we've been enrolling strong all summer long. Last year, or in June at this time, we were looking at quite a loss of students, but we've picked up quite a few students along the way. So, you can see that we're still down fourteen from last year's elementary numbers, had some high classes rolling up. We're up ten in the middle school. We're up, I should have made this bigger.
Eighteen?
Eighteen, thank you. We're up eighteen at the high school. Overall, we're up fourteen. And I'm gonna say that with a caveat. We're not sure of all the little ones that aren't coming back. Sometimes, we don't find out about that until the first day of school. Our admin assistants are all back. We had a great meeting with them today. They're already busy making those phone calls, you know, checking those boxes and, you know, tracking down any leads of students that might not be coming back, because that just helps us understand kind of where we're at in the process. We are monitoring these numbers to identify whether we need to add staff or not, or if we need to move any of those positions around.
Please.
I just have a procedural question. So, when a student drifts off and goes to a private school, and the private school will call us, right? And does that get triggered pretty efficiently and we know immediately, or do they wait?
So, if a student doesn't come on the first day, we're making phone calls.
Okay.
We're finding out, where are you at? Is everything okay? That's when we often find, and really, it's at the high school where we get most of those. The elementaries are really good, for the most part, about letting us know that they're not coming back. And oftentimes, why? We track when they're going from a public school to a public school. We can see that, and we can analyze that data. We can't necessarily track when they're going to a private school. We do ask the question, you know, of those types of things, but...
So, they have to get admitted to a private school. So, the private school, that doesn't trigger an immediate email to you that says, hey, we got your student, or...
No.
They don't feel any obligation to let us know?
No. I mean, sometimes, depending on their workflow, and this is true, I guess, everywhere, they'll do a request for the CA sixty. That's oftentimes our trigger, but sometimes, we don't find out about that until after the school year starts.
Okay.
Especially as we start getting into these months, or this crunch time, we're probably finding out more about them now. The next time I give you an update at our next board meeting, I'll probably update you again on enrollment, because things are getting closer and closer to the real number. But again, I have to always say, and this is mostly secondary, and this happens, parents will move away, they'll, you know, move to another location, or, you know, as Vice President Kemba Whitel mentioned, you know, they do choose to go to a private school, and we don't find out about it until after school starts.
Thanks. All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And as we look at the enrollment numbers, there's a former board member who had said that kids don't often come in neat packages. So, also, what this indicates when we see shifts in numbers like this, well, it may not indicate when you see a net fourteen right now that we would need to hire more teachers, but the reality is, we do, because of where the kids place and so on. So, that's an additional, or additionally budgetary constraint that we have in the months of August, we might not see coming. So, Brian and Rebecca, of course, will keep you apprised of any needs or necessities on that, but that's something we've been working on and kind of put a pin in that comment before, when I get to my comment about an interview I did today. But, first off, we're gonna talk AI. And Ms. Polanski, I would say that normally, their board meetings have this many people to welcome you, or something like that, or make that up, but I can't do that. This is your first board meeting, and we'd like to welcome you, obviously, to Northville, formerly as our chief academic officer. So, thank you, welcome. And then, just a brief update for the board on AI tools, that we tried a number of them last year, putting them in the hands of our teachers to hopefully, you know, help as far as from a time standpoint, educational efficacy standpoint. But I know that you've engaged in over a month of due diligence around that. Could you just let the board know where we landed, please?
Yes, absolutely, and I'm so glad to be here. Thank you so much. We had some folks, Jen Lawson and Erin, came and shared with you an update in June, and I recognize that was pretty brief. And we identified the tools that we had piloted last year, and maybe a few more to try for this year, but the idea is that this is a pilot. And so, by the end, we want to narrow it down to a certain number of tools. And so, when I came on board, the first thing I did was review usage reports and try to talk to various stakeholders to make sure, are there any tools that we maybe don't need to pay for, for this next year, knowing we've already had a year of the pilot? I also worked with Wayne Risa, who's done their own analysis. And we identified that there were a couple tools, Power Buddy, School Psych AI, and Diffit, that we probably didn't need to move forward and pay for this upcoming year. There are, we will narrow it down further, but in order to make that decision, we need more folks involved. With Power Buddies, Psych AI, and Diffit, we had some clear usage numbers that indicated an information, other pieces of information that said, we probably don't need to continue this particular investment, but with the other tools, we need more time. We need this additional year. And we've organized them into four categories, which are instructional assistance, which will look a lot like a chatbot that you've seen traditionally, student engagement platforms, those are the things that the kids kind of interact with back and forth, student voice and reflection tools, and interactive video learning. So, we've got these four categories. By the end of next year, we want to narrow it down to ideally one tool in each category. And we've got, in some of them, we've got a number of them that we're looking at. We will be announcing in a couple weeks, the opportunity for staff to join the AI Task Force. We have a clear timeline that, once I've shared it with our building administrators and gotten some feedback, we will also share that with you to help you see where you'll get information along the way, with how we're progressing, and the ways that we're gonna narrow down these tools further.
Could you explain a little more? You said you wanted to narrow it down to one in each category?
Right, so, School AI, Magic School, and Brisk, for example, are all tools that do the same thing.
Okay.
And we're piloting all three of them.
Okay.
Now, each one of them might have some nuances, and they are busy acquiring each other as well, which is super interesting to watch in the landscape. So, what we'd like to do by the end of the year is only pay for one of those three tools.
I'm just wondering how that works through K-12, like, the same AI usage when we'd use it in early elementary versus the high school?
I'm glad you brought that up, because these tools are all trying, they know districts can't afford to have, to buy more than one in general. In fact, we've had such a privilege to try so many, and what they're all doing is trying to make sure that they have acquired enough little companies that they can meet the needs of all folks. And so, that's why it's very important that our AI Task Force have folks that range from kindergarten teachers all the way up to secondary folks in the different roles. So, we want a diverse group of stakeholders, thinking about how this is gonna work. And there's also a number of different types of tools, but those big three that I named, they're pretty comprehensive. They, each one of them keeps, School AI just added a bunch more pieces that suddenly made them compete with Brisk again just a couple weeks ago. So, they're really in this little game that they're playing to outcompete each other. It looks like School AI might purchase Snorkle, which is one of the other tools we're already looking at. So, it's, that's part of why we need another year to dig into this, and also, we want to make sure lots of folks can have a voice as we narrow it down, but knowing that it wouldn't be fiscally responsible to pay for all three of those tools.
Makes sense. Yeah, thank you for that quick update. I know that as we're getting ready to launch a new school year, it's helpful to have kind of the vision of where we're headed with that, those tools.
And Devin, I'm gonna speak for a little bit here about the interview I had today, but perhaps it's also a good moment, since I believe it's the first time we've been together, to thank the community for sinking fund vote that went through. Personally, I want to thank members of our team that worked throughout the summer to publicize it, and what people might not know is our board members, who went to meetings that we couldn't cover, who talked to people and spoke to people about the importance of that sinking fund. But, so if you could just prep yourself for maybe a little encapsulation, and I won't take the glory of a move that you made that I think is really gonna help us long-term in the district. It was the first time we went for a certain amount, okay, year-wise. So, today, I was asked kind of the last minute by Fox Two to do an interview around school lunches. And so, what the reporter was interested in is, are we going to continue to offer them? And we put a communication out yesterday, I believe, saying yes through September, but I just, I guess I'm saying this so if anyone sees it, they're not surprised. I got a little bit feisty. And the reporter asked me what I would say to the legislature, and I said, do your job. I said, I don't care if you're a Republican or a Democrat, the bottom line is, the budget should have been to us by July first. Our ability to make decisions, your ability to make decisions, is compromised by their inability to do what they're statutorily required to do. I also said, I find it deliciously ironic that the teachers that I serve beside, the administrators I serve beside, if they are a day late on a state requirement, if a teacher in our midst, then you will often get chastised for it, or criticized for it in a way that's wholly unfair. Yet, we have people whose job it is to legislate to make sure that you all can make the decisions we need to make. They're not doing it. So, the October first is really that deadline piece of it. And Devin, if I made any mistakes in what I said there, but thank you for prepping me before that today. But, we are in an age where we have to be advocates and allies for each of our kids, as well as other kids. It's unfair that you all are in a position, and we are all in a position, to wonder what's gonna happen. What kind of money are we gonna have? Where is it gonna go to, and so on? And it's difficult. So, I just wanted to give you all a heads up, if it's out there. I was not disrespectful, but I certainly was direct. Devin, could you talk to us about the sinking fund, and kind of the thing that made this one different? Seventy-three percent pass rate, fantastic, a lot of people worked on it, but what's unique about this particular one? Yeah, so, this sinking fund was crucial. I call it like the foundation for Northville Public Schools. It was for ten years, so it's gonna guarantee for ten years that, you know, students that go through Northville Public Schools don't have to worry about where the money's gonna come from for a new roof, for an air conditioning unit, for all the infrastructure that we need in a district our size that isn't covered in state funding. Without that sinking fund, we would have to tap into general fund dollars, and, you know, projects aren't getting cheaper. So, it really was a foundational fund for us to help kind of make sure we have the facilities in the right order to educate kids. So, thank you to the community. And that decade-long piece is massive, because traditionally, we'd done five-year. Yeah. And so, that means for ten years, we have that level of protection, so to speak. And I want to thank the community for that, in the sense it protects our general fund, which then, those dollars go to instructional costs. So, without sinking fund, and we don't take it for granted, half of the proposals did not pass this year across the state, fifty percent. So, for ten years, the community has, again, renewed, I believe with their faith in us, and protected our general fund from that, but also given us a rainy day fund for Winchester. We just did the roof, I think it was seven hundred K. Without a sinking fund, that seven hundred K comes from general fund, which impacts our operations on a daily basis. Yeah, all right, perfect, thank you. And then, my lead-up?
I wanted to hop into that, I'm really grateful for the community to have taken on that vote in the summer, right? And I also want to thank the township, and the city, and Novi for doing all of that work, right? Northville Township in particular, and I guess also the city, there was nothing else on the ballot. So, really grateful for their efforts in making that happen for us, that it's, you know, busy time, turnout was, you know, obviously enough to pass the bond, or the sinking fund. I'm just really grateful for everybody's efforts in that, and for the community for voting, right? It would be easy for a person to just say, oh, it's summer, I don't remember, you know, what's the election day, or maybe I have absentee ballot, but just really super grateful for the support from the community, so that we can really focus on our number-one task, which is educating our students, caring for them in the most appropriate way, and making sure that we have that stable financial future for our district.
And my comment was going to be in tandem with all of my colleagues here. My conversations were with community members who did not have kids in the schools. We're not necessarily in touch, maybe, with the latest cutting-edge initiatives and concerns we have about our infrastructure, but yet, when I spoke to them, and I know we all carried this message, what is a sinking fund? And what resonated in my conversations was with other homeowners who set aside money because they know they're gonna need a roof, or they know if they're in a historic home that needs painting, you know? And so, they've set aside money, that's good fiscal management, at a family level that they could relate to why a sinking fund is essential for good fiscal management of our school buildings. And I think they're also, it also resonated with them, that they're in historic homes in the city, they understand the deterioration and the demand for enhanced paying attention. Well, we have historic buildings in our school district too, and we're very proud of them, and we have bonds to keep them updated and current, but they still take some money to take care of, where does the water flow when it flows off the parking lot, and the parking lots, and the, you know, the hardscapes outside of our buildings, et cetera. They understood that. And I think that's really what contributed, I think, to the recognition in our community that this is a legitimate, smart thing to do to maintain our school district, whether you know intimately, you know, whether you have a kid in the district or not. So, I think that that was really valuable, and I was glad to work in tandem with all of you in that message.
Well, again, thank you for going and presenting in different locations formerly when we weren't able to. That really, I was pleased, and thank you to Mr. Frazier's geo-mapping capabilities, so we could get maximum sign coverage with the minimum spend. Well done.
That's a great analogy. I was his prince.
And, you know, it's all this stuff, and Lisa, what you said, I think people don't understand, like, it was a lift for the township and the city, because they have to get pole workers all day. They have to get that. So, that meant Devin's team working with the city, you guys having to approve the resolutions and making sure that they were in a place to do so. And one of the reasons that we, as a team, chose to go earlier is, if it were not to be successful, we wanted the opportunity to take another chance at it. I would rather be careful, was it measure twice, cut once? I would rather be careful because of the essential nature of that sinking fund going forward, so thank you to everybody.
Yeah, and I think also with our construction, right? There were a couple communities, a couple pulling locations that were moved because of the construction happening in our building, so people were, you know, resilient and appreciate the support.
I'm very grateful for the folks out there. I did go up to the football field with my son, because he's training for a soccer thing, and there were a couple guys on the football field, and I think you guys know me well. I said, hey, because they were like thirty-something years old, did you vote for the sinking fund? The guy's like, what's the sinking fund? And I said, oh, so you want to use our facilities, but you don't want to pay the freight? And so, I took a moment to educate him on that. He said, oh, we'll vote the next time, we're so sorry. They were great guys.
Love it.
I'm gonna tee up the next piece, which is Mentally Strong Mustangs, and I think a guest is probably gonna come here and join Darby, but, and this is something that those of you who interviewed me, I think there's one of you on the board now, or people who heard, from the very beginning of me declaring that I wanted to be your superintendent, I focused, a huge focus on the mental health and well-being of our staff and our students as being pivotal. Question that was asked, what do I see as a challenge in the next five years? I'm a historian. I see one of the teachers who classroom in quite a bit is also a historian, and we both know that historians are loath to predict anything. And, but what I thought was, you know, with COVID occurring, my real concern and watch point was, what about the well-being and mental health of our kids and the people who take care of them? So, in our first year here, we created a package to support our staff, which was an employee assistance program, which I'm happy to say, in talking to staff members throughout the district who have used it, it's been beneficial. I myself have used it, and it's been beneficial. Pride Athletics membership, as well as Weight Watchers, to attend to, I didn't want to be a person who said these things and didn't see action, and we had that about mid-first year. Second year, we swung for the fences, and I am so grateful for those of you on the board who supported it, who saw it, who visited Michigan Medicine's mobile school-based health clinics with us, and going to different schools to see that. Unfortunately, I think we were caught in a situation that I would still think was very unfortunate, especially seeing the cuts coming from the federal government, and how those gaps could have been filled if we had been successful. But it was nothing that the board did to make it unsuccessful. That was a decision by a fairly big school a few miles down the road, that didn't, in my opinion, have the resolve to do what was right for our community. But that was a pretty major focus. That would have been, oh, gosh, over a million dollars a year coming in. It's okay. Those things will never stop me and our team from searching for ways to best support our staff and our kids. And what we're about to share with you right now is something that I am terribly excited about, and Ms. Hoppins, that will take you through it. In conjunction with that, yesterday, did a podcast with Color My World. Some of you know, I know Melissa, I think I've seen you the three years I've shown up there on, and different folks there, and I know that some of our high school staff know what Color My World is who are in the room. And really, unfortunately, it was born out of a student completing suicide in two thousand seventeen. And Annie, I'm trying to think Annie's last name, I started it, anyone in the crowd know? Annie, or have her in class? Hightmeyer, yep, thank you, Sean. So, Annie Hightmeyer started Color My World, an organization, to really help with youth mental health at the high school. I wish I could say that some of the people in the room with us, that that was the last time that they had to experience losing a kid. Hasn't been. I worry about our coaches. I worry about our fine arts kids, who are there literally six to seven hours a day after school. We have a twenty-four-hundred-kid high school, so if you think about it, like, being one of five to play on a basketball team is a pretty tall order. Being the lead in a play with twenty-four-hundred kids, that's a lot of pressure. And let's add on top of that, the copious amounts of AP and IB classes our kids take, much at their detriment, and the pressure. But the podcast, if you all listen to it, I think you're gonna hear truth spoken from three kids that talk about the pressures they're feeling, why they believe in Color My World. And if we don't listen to them, shame on us. We are the adults, and we are in positions to make a difference in the lives of children. If we don't try, then I don't know why any of us are in this room. And also, I'll put a plug in, September twenty-first is the color run, it's at the high school, and I highly recommend it. And with that said, Ms. Hoppins, if you'd like to take us away, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about our new program, Mentally Strong Mustangs. I'm with Janine Costello, who is going to give a little bit of a bio and some further slides, but you'll get an introduction to her and her work. I'm really excited just to have the opportunity to think about ways to expand our mental health programming and services through the use of grant funding. And thirty-one N six is grant funding specifically for mental health services, and it's pretty limited in scope. It really requires districts to think about ways to expand programming with licensed professional therapists. So, you have to be either a LPC, a Licensed Professional Counselor, Licensed School Social Worker, Licensed Psychologist, BCBA. So, it's pretty limited in terms of the staffing that you can bring on to support this expansion of services, but it's important, because they really, in identifying this grant, the state was really looking for ways to provide more of that clinical support, rather than traditional school counseling, school social work, if that makes sense. So, thirty-one N six, as I mentioned, is grant funding that we received, and it must be spent by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. We're excited about the opportunity, as Dr. Weber mentioned, to think about our kids that are involved in so many things after school. We have nearly eighty percent of students that are involved in some sort of extracurricular activity, and in, the, most of the adults go home after the school day ends, and our kids are there until nine, ten o'clock. It's like the city that never sleeps, basically, because there's activity going on, you know, during breaks, during the summer, after school, and that's a lot of time kids are giving to those extracurricular activities, and the expectations are quite high for them. They're high for them to perform both academically and their extracurricular. So, we want to think about ways that we can support our kids, support our coaches, our sponsors, our directors, and our families in managing those expectations in a healthy Thinking about just the overall well-being and things that we really want to focus on when we talk about, or we talk to kids, it's the lack of sleep that they are getting, maybe not making the best nutritional decisions, because they're constantly going from school to activity, to getting home to finish up, you know, academic tasks and responsibilities, and also just how to cope with all the stress and pressure that they have in their lives. So, that's why we're really thinking about a layer of support that extends out of the school day. school day. And, and, and that's really where Janine and, and her team come in to help those efforts. Previous slide has, has linked an article. It's a great article, specific to athletes, but I think it really applies to kids that are just are very involved in, in different, you know, pursuits. So thinking about our athletes and how vulnerable they are to performance anxiety, burnout, that high level of stress and things that happen. An athlete that, you know, may be a top performer and suddenly has an injury, and how to cope with that. Or the athlete that had a, had a pretty strong identity in high school that is moving on to college, and maybe that college sports or athletics is not something that they're going to do at the next level. Apply that to any of those extracurriculars. So there's a lot of, lot of need that exists, and also on the parental expectations that come with, with wanting your child to succeed, sometimes to a point that it does negatively impact the child's functioning because that, you know, that pressure is there from, from families. So Janine is here. We were introduced to Janine through Brian Smolsky, and they, they have a connection. But as we were looking at how we could bring this support into our, our buildings, both at the high school and eventually middle schools, there, there, this really doesn't exist anywhere across the state. And Brian's very connected through his athletic connections and, and really looking at other high schools, they may have performance coaches, they have trainers, but not necessarily this focus on the, the wellbeing of, of our kids. We see it in college campuses oftentimes, right? They have very large facilities that have a number of professionals that help support, specifically athletes, but not necessarily anything that we could find here in Michigan. So it was nice that Brian made the connection, and we started having conversations with Janine probably in February.
Yeah.
I have a timeline that I'll review. And so I just wanted to give Janine an opportunity to introduce herself and answer questions that you might have.
And Janine, if I could tee up a second. So, so Ms. Hoppinsted contacted Henry Ford Health, the University of Michigan Health. We couldn't find any major institution who, they loved the idea, but they frankly never heard of this approach at K-12 level. And respectfully, they were keen on giving us athletic trainers, the, the folks who tape our kids up and take care of them. But really, we couldn't find anybody who had done this as we searched across the country, like this approach. And I've got to say, the Brian Smolsky, and I've said this at this table, and I'll say it again, and I've done this for a bit, best athletic director I've ever served aside. And he heard what Ms. Hoppinsted was saying, when I would see him at the high school, I would talk to him, and Janine, he introduced us to you. And your background, you don't have to share with everyone, is, to me, it's fascinating, everything that you've, you've done in life. But I just want to compliment you as Ms. Peck and Ms. Hoppinsted, Ms. Santa, Mr. Smolsky, Mr. Koski, have all worked on this. Your timeliness and professionalism in presenting a way forward that other people couldn't conceptualize was really, really impressive. And I've had the pleasure of being in meetings and seeing the documentation. But my guess is, the people who, the millions watching at home, as well as people in this room, want to know who you are, what makes you tick, and what you're excited about here.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, so I'm Janine Costella. I have my master's in Counseling Psychology, which I got at Western Michigan University. Before that, I got my bachelor's at Grand Valley State University, where I was fortunate enough to also be an athlete there. I was on the women's basketball team. And we had some of our own kind of ups and downs, but my senior year, we ended on quite a high note. We made it to the Elite Eight. And we left, we left the, the success there on that court that season, but was part of a great team, had just really excellent coaches. I'm from Canton. I grew up in Plymouth, but I went to Canton High School, so I was part of the basketball team and soccer team there. So I have a lot of experience as a, as a student athlete and knowing what those pressures are. I also put it in my bio, on my junior, I had a serious sports injury from ACL before my soccer season. And back then, in the day, basketball was actually a fall sport. So I had even less time to recover. And so for my senior year, it was looking like I wasn't going to get recruited for college, you know, scholarships and opportunities to continue. The sport I was passionate about was kind of off the table. But I had a very excellent doctor and a lot of support from my athletic trainer and my athletic director, that I was able to actually play the majority of my senior year. Ended up getting the opportunity to play in college, so on and so forth. And in becoming a psychologist and doing this type of work, and I've worked with, I've worked with children in a residential mental health facility. I've worked with, you know, the worried well, so to speak, in private practice. I've worked with prisoners in the Michigan Department of Corrections, where I was a psychologist, the lead psychologist, and then eventually a, they call them unit chiefs, which is just a fancy supervisor, like first level supervisor, for the inpatient mental health program. So after that is where I landed today, where I'm actually the Assistant Director for the Office of Behavioral Science for the Michigan State Police. And my work right now actually aligns a lot with what it is that I can bring to Northville Schools, and that we do a lot of mental health presentations about resiliency. MSP actually has a wellness division that we work closely with, so we, we are much more specific on the psychological piece of it and not just the wellness piece. Those things are quite married, as you can imagine. But we do presentations on this, we're part of a peer support program. So all things that I'm kind of doing now and developing my own presentations and also doing a lot of therapy is that there's such a great need, and there's so much that we can do. I'm fortunate in my office that we can do whatever we feel is kind of right. We're our own experts in that way. And so with my, my background and what I'm currently doing, it just really felt like a, a mesh to bring what I have. And very briefly, in just developing a team of people, I tried to identify people specifically in the Northville area, which ties to some practices. And the support and the hands raised of, I would, I would love to do this, this is something, you know, I thought about taking, like, taking my work to the next level, what that might look like, and this is an amazing opportunity. And so it was just, I didn't have to look that far, I didn't have to look that hard, and I found some amazing people. And so I'm happy to kind of bring them on board and make sure that we can get Northville aligned with not just the, not just the topic, but the right person developing and presenting that topic.
Thank you.
So some of the services that are planned, presentations for students, for families, and for coaches, sponsors, directors. Thinking about the fantastic resources that are available during Parent Camp and the presentations that happen, we've heard each year that I have been here in Northville, wouldn't it be great to expand that out throughout the year? And, and potentially offer presentations that could be virtual? And sometimes, you know, giving, it's difficult to come in person, so might we do virtual presentations? And, and really try to get an understanding of what it is families and students and, and coaches and sponsors and directors might want? And Janine has developed several feedback forms, input forms, for each of those groups to complete, so that they can provide feedback, and those presentations can be tailored to what it is that they want to see. We'd like to start a mentorship program, and, and that's kind of a, that would be a work in progress in collaboration with our counseling staff at the high school to align. We have different mentoring programs. Currently, we have our, our brand new Mustang mentors that are the mentors for the ninth grade students transitioning into high school. We have our peer-to-peer, and that kind of goes alongside our unified program. So there's different mentoring opportunities currently. This would be another layer of, of teaching kids the, the signs and symptoms of, of a peer being in emotional distress, and maybe how to respond and connect that student to help and, and just be kind of those, those leaders of, of having their ears and eyes out for their, their peers as they're training beside, you know, performing beside their peers and, and not maybe knowing that, you know, this is, this is a sign to be aware of, and, and to maybe the, the right words to say to get that student to the help they may need. And then the as-needed team support. Thinking about, let's say, the girls volleyball team is headed to the state championship, and they're, they're about to play on a very large platform, right? And that, that brings a level of, of stress. And working with Janine and maybe someone from her team to really ground them to be thinking about how to prepare for that mentally, because that's, it's a big deal. Robotics team is going to, you know, a competition, and what might they need as a team to work together to be able to be as successful as possible? Or from time to time when conflict arises. And we've all been in groups and on teams, and we know that that's a very real thing, especially in high school. And so sometimes the support to kind of, supporting the, the coach or the sponsor to work through that is, is certainly helpful and very welcome. So this is really a timeline of where we began. We started having conversations as a quote team when we were applying for 31N6, discussions with our building leaders and asking what, what it is they felt like they needed, knowing that the scope for the grant funding is pretty limited. And then we started discussing with our, our counseling team members and talking about the requirements and what they see. Does that align to what building leaders and what our thinking was in, in overall support for this? So we are all in alignment in moving forward, and you can kind of see where we started in February and to where we are currently. And our plan moving forward is to have a series of communications, a communication will go out to families, high school families tomorrow after this. And they'll be given this presentation and some information, communications to our coaches, sponsors, directors, and high school staff, and, and then another communication a few days later to students, kind of introducing them to this program. Janine has already attended the, the Fall, Fall Coaches Meeting alongside Brian Smolsky, just as an introduction. And I, I believe already has a team that has requested for her to come in and provide support. So, you know, and that's the exciting part, right?
Wow.
That, that folks are excited about having an additional layer of, of support. And hopefully our kids will be as well, and, and we'll get to be able to engage with them and speak to them about what it is that they need. So, so that's really our timeline, and wondering if you have questions or feedback as we move forward?
I'm curious. So over the past, what it's been year or two, we've done, is it, I keep, I always mess, is it Be Nice? I wrote down Be Kind, and then I was like, that's, that doesn't go with the acronym. I remember what the words were. Will this work in tandem with that program? Will it be totally separate? How, because I, I see some areas that it would, you know, overlap a little.
I think this will work beautifully with Be Nice. And before Beth left, we had that very same conversation. Be Nice hasn't taken off quite at the high school level as it has, like, at needs, for example. But in working with Melissa and Bill in, at the middle school level, we'll make sure that it all flows together, that it's not another thing. Because really, we're thinking about Be Nice, the, the programming is really during the school day. This is, this is after, and, and we just want to align everything together. So it's not a, it won't be bumping into each other
Okay.
from our perspective.
Curious to, around like the contract piece, it's either contract or hire. Sounds like we're doing a contract, right? That if we were to hire someone for, using this 31N6 money, given the fluctuations in terms of budget items or budget funding coming our way, seems like this is our safer, safer situation in this way, right? That we hope that we can continue it, but with a contract, you know, every contract is up for renewal on an annual basis or a biannual basis?
Exactly.
So this way, we're not adding to our, you know, long-term expenses, I suppose, as we would be if we were to hire an additional person for this. And we wouldn't be able to hire, like, a school counselor or something like that for this role. It has to be separate and different.
It does.
Correct? Okay.
That's exactly it.
Okay.
I'm just curious about if a trained peer notices that a student is in severe distress, like, what does that look like going through? Who do they talk to next? How do they inform parents? Just how that works logistically?
Yeah, typically with a peer support program, you know, the, the interaction is between the two, the two people, and it's really linking them with resources. So the training of the, in this case, it'd be a student, right? Training the student is some active listening skills and some trauma-informed, you know, language and things like that. And then once they can kind of identify, because you need that person to kind of open up as well. But it's, it's not for them to tell them how to manage their stress, it's for them to align their resources. So if there is someone who is suicidal, the training would be very specific that this is, this is an immediate adult intervention. So if it's during school, this is straight to the counselor's office. And in my world of mental health, it's always, voluntary is always best. However, there is that piece of, you know, you have told me this, I do need to tell you that I, I do need to inform someone else, even if that makes you uncomfortable. You know, I can't, your, your, you know, your life is more important to me than how you feel about me type thing, right? So it's kind of training them with that verbiage and with that confidence and understanding to do those things, because ultimately, they're, they can't hold any responsibility to, you know, being, being the treater in this. It's really just aligning resources and knowing which ones they are. If it was less significant, it's that, you know, I've, I've thought about hurting myself or such, okay, yeah, we, we still need to inform people, but like, how, let's make a plan of how you can do that. Or maybe let's, let's talk to somebody about how you can plan to tell your parents, because those are the people who need to know, right? Just as an example.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective as a licensed mental health practitioner, same thing, right? It's, it's great to empower kids to have those tools that we know that they're hearing those stories from their friends. Other high-risk behaviors, right? I'm imagining that kids will also have those opportunities to learn, how do you, you know, talk to a friend who maybe is using some kind of substances? So we know that that happens. We have, you know, some self-report, we have, I'm sure coaches have a lot of insight into some of those choices that kids make. So excited to, to see this kick off and, and wrap our kids around at the high school level that I, Ron, I think you were also there this weekend, the Steps Against Suicide Walk was this weekend. And I think one of the things that has really amazed me about Northville as a community is that when there are difficult things that happen, people come together to support, to participate in, you know, learning more and decreasing stigma, and just really grateful that this is kind of our next step, at least for our high school kids from the, from the school perspective.
So we are, in a sense, piling this type of program. This is not happening in any other school district. We're kind of starting something, right? So, you know, to, at your point, both your points, one about it being based on grant funding, and secondarily, the importance of what is, you're hoping to achieve, which is kind of hard to quantify, but also because of the nature in which it's funded, how are we planning on getting feedback about how it's going and, you know, what's working, what isn't, as a whole and for individual programming, the aspects of the programming?
Great question. So we have talked about that, that survey and data collection. So not only just, not only survey families for input in, in terms of what they want to see, but then following up. And Janine, I don't know if you want to speak to what you already have? Yeah, the idea would be is if you attended a presentation, you'd be given the opportunity to complete a survey around that. If you receive services, you know, services, if someone came and talked to your team, we'd have a follow-up survey just to capture what your experience was. And then also, if there's, if there's more of a need in that way. And so, you know, as we move along with these things and gather that information, that will be shared. will be shared.
We also have other data collection opportunities. So we have SCL surveys that we're looking at now, year to year, and we're looking at that data. We're looking at the number of risk assessments and threat assessments that are done. So we keep track on that, of that year to year. And that's data that kind of helps inform, you know, is our programming having the impact that we would expect? And, and so there's not necessarily one thing, but we can kind of pull data from different sources and, and look at those as a team to say, what are we seeing? Hopefully we're seeing the trend lines coming down in terms of how many kids are at that crisis stage where we have to develop, you know, plans of care for them or refer them out. And, and we see a decrease in that, that will, that will provide a little bit of information about the impact of programming.
Are you thinking that because we have such a high percentage of students who participate in extracurricular activities, that that would impact the overall school? Because that, I know we have like 80% that you said, but there's 20% that don't participate. I'm guessing the SCL survey does not necessarily ask that question about it?
It doesn't necessarily ask if, if they're, if they participate in extracurriculars, but that's something because of the customization of Panorama, we could potentially add.
Oh, that would be interesting.
And the, the different tiers and approaches that we've talked about, tier one, tier two, tier three is what layers do we have? I think during COVID, Rebecca maybe was the one or somebody who's famous for talking about layering Swiss cheese on top of each other to cut the holes out. And really this impetus, yeah, that's a bit, I want to use the word again, I'm sorry, triggering, triggering. But the formative assessment also, Ms. Meyer, that we had really came from significant community response and input around our efforts to bring health clinics here. And the, the takeaway, you know, you can learn from everything. And one of the takeaways is no matter how a person felt about it for or against it, unequivocally what was coming out of those large meetings and the comments in those rooms was a tacit acknowledgement that our students need more support. And I just am grateful that, that the board and that our staff, you know, looking at how much our teachers and coaches care about our kids. I also worry about them though, frankly. You know, I had a conversation before this meeting with, I think, somebody who's going to speak here in a few minutes. And if you think about what we ask our, a director of a play or a choir or a coach to do after school, ostensibly we're paying them $6,000 to $7,000 to be away from their own family, to be under the scrutiny of wins and losses or how much gait you get at that event. And one of the pictures that was on here, could you go back to the one with the board, please? Yeah. So if you look at that, that's not typical. And three years, 10 state championships. So last year our play grossed more than any other play before it. And as that success comes, people start to feel like that is normal and that that should keep happening, but the excruciating pressure it puts on, and not only our parents and our coaches, I frankly worry about our coaches and I worry about our advisors because this is a community that has a lot of demands and they are often put in positions of extreme pressure. That, we want to help them as well. For the parents who are terrified for their kids, they have an inkling that there may be an eating disorder going on, but they don't know how to approach it or how to go towards it. Janine Darby, the staff that they put together, the support we're getting from Brian and Tony, those are all things that our hope is can help us. And I'll say this finally, and you've heard me say this before, Ms. Meyer, maybe the whole board has. When I get asked a question about data streams on certain things, there is a reason why I think organizations are reticent to go towards as full-throated as I believe we need to. Things like the prevention of suicide or hidden harm. It's really hard to prove. I don't know, RJ, can you tell me if you're doing better or not? My answer is going to be really is, is plain as it is. Any year, month that goes by that we don't lose a staff member or a kid at their own hands, I hope something we've done has helped. But if we're not doing anything to approach that in a meaningful way, then I believe we're not fulfilling our human obligation to each other. So I appreciate the question on the measurement and I think these two have it dialed in. But I would also like to say publicly that please hold a little space in your mind, anyone, that, that some of them are non-numbers, are things we don't hear about later or years down the road of a kid who said, yeah, I was cutting the whole time I was in high school. No one knew I hit it really well. And they lived in hell for how many years because of that? That's my hope, is that we don't have that data set coming back to us. I can easily say for, and I'm sorry to trigger anybody, but anyone who's lost somebody at their own hands or had a kid who, or a kid they taught or, or coached that was mentally unwell in, in making choices that were really bad for them, it's, it's a horrible, horrible, horrible feeling. As educators, everyone in this room cares about kids or we wouldn't do it, all of you, everyone to my left. So I appreciate the board giving us the support to go towards things that might seem a little different because they are different. And we will certainly keep you apprised of the progress on it. I didn't know the data point of a team already reaching out. Big ups.
Great. Awesome.
So I would make a kind of a final comment, which is it changes the conversation. It changes the conversation in the community between parents and coaches and kids and athletes. And it opens up an acknowledgement that leaves some space where I'm, I'm not feeling good. You know, I know that we just had Channel Four here interviewing Mike, my football coach. Everybody watched Channel Four last night? Okay. So, and this football team is crashing through the, you know, the barrier and it's running out onto the field and it's all really good and it looks good, but there's kids that maybe aren't, that are, are striving to be part of that, but yet. And, and I just really, you know, salute you, Janine, for opening up the conversation that allows space for not feeling good, even though you're striving to, you know, to be excellent in your, in your craft, whatever it is, in acting, in music, in vocal development. I think about art. I'm always going to try to think about extrapolating that, those kinds of mental health supports to the kid who isn't the star on the team, but who's, you know, aspiring. And how do you aspire in a healthy manner? So thank you for that. And I, I welcome those conversations at parent camp. I think that's a great idea.
Oh.
There you go.
Where's the Rocket?
Now there's the Rocket.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. I had another question. You know, talking about all the athletics and the, and the clubs and, you know, all the different teams at the high school, a lot of times, you know, it's a, a staff member that is the supervisor, the coach, all of that. At the middle school level, a lot of times, especially like the academic clubs, those are parent volunteers leading those. So how, do you see that the, the, you know, the training or anything would be different to reach, you know, parent volunteers versus staff members or anything like that?
That's a great question. I don't think that we would see it different because this, we would still get feedback, even, you know, doesn't matter if you're a volunteer or a paid position. And we would still offer the presentations and offer a way if, if that volunteer feels like their group needs some type of support, that they're reaching out to Bill or Melissa to initiate that. So I, I don't necessarily see it different if it's volunteer, but that's a, a good point. And actually when we spoke to Mr. Jones about this, he said that some of the, the clubs that are offered at the middle school, kids within those groups are, are probably ones that he is most worried about. Not, not necessarily the kids in the athletic area, so.
I'm excited to see this come together, right? I've heard in other settings, right, that different teams have reached out to different clinicians in the community, which is awesome. I also think that to have that oversight and say, you know, we know that this is, you know, this is a plan and this is kind of a system of making sure that we get kids connected and that nobody gets left out in that way, that every has access to this, every group has access to this. And I think that's more comprehensive than different teams reaching out for support as needed. Which, I mean, great to do that too, right? But it's like, how do we, it's like, it's the Swiss cheese.
Thank you.
Cool. Thanks. Awesome. Excited. Anything we need to do? Okay, anything else for that? We're not taking a vote. All right, then this is our first opportunity for public comment. Looks like we have two cards, one card. Okay. Uh, let's see. Okay. Dan Moses from Ethos. Hi, Dan. Come on up to the screen. I think we have three minutes for public comment? Yep, that, put him over there. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. I usually don't have a piece of paper in my hand. I usually go off the cusp, but I promised Jim, my CO, that I was going to follow this to a T because there's a lot of quick little things I like to do. My name is Dan Moses. I'm here to speak on behalf of Ethos Human Performance. Some of you know who I am. Dr. RJ, I've been trying to talk to you for a long time because I obviously, I'm very passionate about this, this community and this organization. We are proud partner with Norfolk Athletics for over five years. I've known Brian Smalsky for majority of the time the Ethos has been in existence for over, well over 10 years now. At Ethos, our mission is simple but powerful, to develop athletes as people first, building strength, resilience and character that extends beyond the game. Coming here tonight and talking to Dr. RJ was kind of a blessing. We talk about obviously the mental aspect of just athletics in general and then also too, the student body. I, I do believe that Ethos is the epitome of that and working hand in hand. As I stand up here tonight, I obviously will use the word student athlete multiple times, but again, I like to differentiate student and athlete because our goal at Ethos is to impact as many people as we possibly can, whether you are combining student athlete, whether you are a student or you are just an athlete. We believe that performance is not just physical, it's mental, emotional and creative. And that's our philosophy and has driven every step of our work with the Norfolk student athletes in the past. Over the past five plus years, we've worked with multiple Norfolk high school teams, helping athletes become faster, stronger and more prepared to compete safely at the highest level. But beyond that, we've also invested deeply in the youth programs. I can't speak enough how many young, youth teams we've had from Norfolk District. Mentoring and training the younger athletes to build a solid foundation in their early development. Our team works with kids of all ages, equipping them not only with the physical skills, but also with the discipline, teamwork and the mindset needed for the long-term success. Our connection to this community runs deep. We're not an outside organization trying to step in. We have been here since 2011 and we are already here. We're right down on Sheldon Road and we have a facility right under the M14 underpass. We have a location in South Lyon, our goal, and we work with a lot of different schools directly from a, from a contractual standpoint. But my goal from Norfolk to South Lyon to Novi is to impact everybody. It's a, it's, it's not a competition. My goal is to, like Dr. RJ and everybody here on board is, is to help young minds and lives, and I can't speak highly enough upon that. We are invested and are embedded and we are passionate about helping Norfolk students thrive. We've built relationships with coaches, students, athletes and families, and we want to strengthen those partnerships even more. That's why we're here today, just to ask for your continued support, nothing more, and recognition as a trusted performance resource for Norfolk District. Our vision is to work hand in hand with Norfolk Sports, the, the school district, to raise the standard for training, safety, intervention and leadership development across every team and age group. I think that's my bell, huh? Okay, good. I'll go work quick. Together we can create a unified district-wide performance model that supports every student from youth programs all the way down to the varsity athletics. The Norfolk community is filled with potential. And I say the word potential because of great leaders such as yourself that are trying to do things to set yourself apart, not from a competition standpoint, but to do something for the great young minds in this community. Ethos wants to be part of that team, help unlock it. We are committed to growing with you, serving your students and continue to provide elite level support right here at home. Thank you for your time. Sorry I went past the bell and your dedication to the health and success of the Norfolk student athletes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I normally stand up and remove you, but I, I think, I don't think that would end well for me. So, but thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next up we have a new hire. I will hand this to you, Ms. Meyer.
Yes. I would like to bring forward motion 11 that the board award a probationary NEA ancillary contract to Mara Kelly for the 25, 26 school year as presented.
All right, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Kimboitell, oh, sorry, by Ms. Meyer, supported by Dr. Kimboitell. Excited to learn more about Ms. Mara.
Absolutely. Thank you, President McIntyre. Hopefully the board's had an opportunity to read a little bit of the background information and your supporting documentation around the position itself. But we're excited to recommend Mara Kelly for the combined social, school social worker and elementary behavior specialist position this evening. I'm not sure if Mara's, hey there, Mara. I didn't, I didn't have the privilege of sitting in on Mara's interviews, but we did go through an extensive interview process. And she initially expressed interest in just our school social work position. That was a point for a part-time FTE position. And as the team started to interview her, which included former executive director of special education, Beth Santa, our special education supervisors, as well as a, a number of our social workers, they walked away extremely impressed with what Mara brought to the table and it begged the question of, hey, would this be a perfect fit for both the part-time social work position and a part-time behavior specialist at the elementary level? And so that conversation was had with Mara and sure enough, she, she expressed interest in this hybrid position. So we're excited that she's interested. Just a little bit about her. Mara holds both her bachelor's and master's of social work from Wayne State University and she's been serving as a school social worker since 2012, most recently in Chelsea School District, where she wore a variety of hats in that process. Among the most important roles being the voice, influence and support she has offered students and their respective families. Two of Mara's references who I had the privilege of speaking with, both characterized her as the best social worker they have ever worked with. And that included one of the building administrators that has supervised her in the past. They don't, they only, they not only spoke about her advocacy for students, but her leadership and influence with staff and supporting students, all characteristics that align with not only the role of a school social worker, but certainly a behavior specialist. As such, we are excited to recommend Mara Kelly for hire this evening. On behalf of the central office administrative team, I recommend that the Board of Education approve an ancillary employee contract for Mara Kelly for the 25, 26 school year. And of course you have your supporting reference documents with additional information in your board packet. Thank you.
Great. Awesome. Seems like a really special opportunity for us and for you. So really, really glad to hear kind of the, yeah, the outward, or whatever, the creative thinking and landing in a really good place and. Do you have any comments, questions, feedback?
Well, as a Wayne State alum, I can't let this opportunity go by to them.
Are you a tartar or warrior?
Well, I actually was. I'm not going to tell that story. I'll go with the warrior. But yeah, presidential scholar with a full academic scholarship for your bachelor of social work and a graduate professional scholar with a full academic scholarship for your master's degree. The school social work at Wayne State is very competitive and it, you have really got to reach, reach a high level of performance or at least ability to be as, to meet the standard of care those faculty expect a lot. And you are a trained clinician as well as I'm sure the research that you did is part of that training. So I think those are really wonderful skills and along with your, your impressive work record, I think it's just the full package. So how many, I had to count, how many schools are we sending here to save children? Just two?
Just two. Yeah. Ridgewood.
Just two. I mean, that seems like a lot.
I know. We're going to move along.
Oh, there we go. They'll walk you out tonight. Maybe start talking about particular classrooms or people.
Anyway, welcome.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
All right, well, let's go ahead and take it for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, welcome aboard and you have a wonderful team behind you. That's great. All right, next up we have our bid award. Ms. Stewart, our treasurer.
Let's get into the really exciting stuff here. I am happy to bring forth motion number 12, that the board authorize the administration to award a contract to Ina Comp TSG in the amount not to exceed 749.
All right. Next up, we have our bid award. Ms. Stewart, our treasurer.
Let's get into the really exciting stuff here. I am happy to bring forth motion number 12, that the board authorize the administration to award a contract to Inacom TSG in the amount not to exceed $749,444.47 for district-wide, um, a VOIP phone system as presented.
Support. All right. We have a motion properly presented by Ms. Stewart, supported by Ms. Meyer. Thank you, Andrew, for giving us a good background on this. Very exciting phone purchase.
It is exciting.
It is exciting, for sure. It's needed. It's an essential.
Our old phone system, we've been running for the past 12 years. It's been running very well. It was a Cisco system, so we would like, we want to continue using the Cisco phone system. So, we went out to bid and pretty much just did a one-for-one handset replacement. But also, we baked in a, have a seven-year warranty into it too. So, it has full support, warranty, replacements. So, and also, the big thing is also the software upgrade, to make sure that if there's any bugs, if there's any security vulnerabilities, everything will get fixed from the handset to the routers to the software on the backend. So, we went out to bid. We had two replies. We had Inacom, we had Conex. Inacom was at $749, Conex was at $1,691. Inacom was the company that did the install prior, even in 2013. So, we had a past experience with them. So, we would like to award this. And hopefully, maybe we can get 12 more years out of this next system. I don't know, but I was really pleased that we were able to push the phone system this far.
Yeah. It does seem like a safety thing, right, that we, we have to have phones in every classroom. Not have to, we want to, right? That it's really important, essential for functioning everywhere. Is this coming from our bond?
Yes, bond 2023.
Thank you. Okay. Yep. I was thinking that was where that was coming from, but it was not.
Should we add that to the?
I feel like that should be part of the motion, maybe?
Part of the motion?
Okay. Can we amend that then? Okay. Just, yeah, wanted to be clear that it's not coming from general fund or sinking fund or anything like that, that we, we've already had the conversations, right? This is part of the planned use of that money. So, and it is essential. I can't believe those phones have lasted for 12 years. That's amazing. And a seven-year warranty is pretty phenomenal. So, all right. Any other questions from the board? All right. Let's go ahead then with a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
I did just think of one question. I'm sorry. Is, for the, especially the office staff that are gonna be using these phones, is there gonna be, like, training that they need to do, or is it the same, it's like a one-for-one?
Other than the handsets having the ability to have Bluetooth?
Oh, wow.
That's gonna be the only real big change on the handsets that we've seen.
So, how does the Bluetooth work then?
I think I have some curiosity back there.
I don't wanna walk into classrooms, all right? You have a conversation with your wife because you gotta cook up to the Bluetooth. It's just the color handsets for the main office that have Bluetooth.
Okay.
But, uh, other than that, it has the same dial, dial pattern. It has the same layout. I would say it's probably the same upgrade as we did with the copy machines.
Okay.
Our copy machine just got upgraded in our office, and I am having a hard time. Like, other than it prints five pages per minute faster, is running its new equipment, it's gonna be a lot more durable. But like, the feature in the layout is pretty much the same. And that was the same thing with phones. We will do, we have training baked into this too. There's a day or two of training.
Okay.
That we will have. But it's, it's, it has, it's virtually like of the same system.
Training for classroom teachers too? Training for everybody? Okay.
Yeah. The handsets for the classroom teachers don't have like the big display and all the other features. The handsets for the teachers are very simple. It's really.
It's the same. Okay, cool. They're not gonna notice a major shift. Okay.
And to put another point on this, the bond money, you know, paying for this, that would be general fund, because as Ms. McIntyre said, we couldn't run a district without phones. So, thank you for squeezing every last drop out of those things. Genuinely, Andrew, it's appreciated. I know your whole team does that when it comes to instructional technology as well. And silent gratitude is worthless, so thanking the community again for supporting our bond work is sincere on all of our behalf. But thank you, Andrew.
Well, and thank you too, right? If we had not gone out for the major bond, right, this could be paid for through sinking fund, and then we don't have, I mean, this would be an emergency, right? If we, yeah, we started to have phones that weren't working. It's, yeah, definitely appreciate the community's support of our public schools. Okay, anything else for that? All right. Thank you. Awesome. All right. Any added agenda items? Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? I see no other blue cards. Okay, going once, going twice. Always happy to hear from anybody in the audience that would like to say something, but thank you for being here as well, even if you didn't wanna make a public comment. We appreciate your presence. Any questions or comments from board members?
So, for the sinking fund, you know, community presentations, I got to go to the library board meeting, and that was the first time that I've attended one of those. And it happened to be the night that they were presenting their updated library card, uh, system. And so, I, it was, it was fantastic. I got the inside scoop on all the new features of the, the card catalog, the online card catalog for the library right next door. And I got to find out firsthand that you have to update your library card in your Libby account in order to make it work. So, if you're having issues, you need to update your library card and re-log in and all that fun stuff.
What is Libby? Is that, that's the online?
For the eBooks.
eBooks. Okay, okay.
Yep. So, it was really, uh, it was a great meeting. I, I'm really happy that I went to that one. And, um, you know.
We are happy to take the services of any board member that'd like to present in evenings. I'll get a list started for each of you.
It was fun. And, and they were also very appreciative to, to have someone there, and they did put up the flyers in the, in the library. And so, no, it was good.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks to the community for letting us come and give our short presentation too, right? And share the information. It's so impressive to me that that passed 70%, right? Looking around our neighboring communities, Norfolk is pretty special. Not that other communities aren't special either, but I'm just saying that we passed the sinking fund, and that was great. Any other questions, comments?
I would like to share an emerging opportunity and actually a recognition of our, the work that we're doing to support math skills in our schools and the work of our coach in particular, Dr. K. Zalinski. And the project that's, that's gotten some attention in the community is her Girls Who Math work. And so, the Norfolk Women's Club invited, had an invited speaker come who wanted to, to donate her speaker fee to a program in the Norfolk Schools that support, you know, STEM in women. And so, Dr. Zalinski's group will be the beneficiary once it goes through the necessary phases of approval. But the speaker who's donating her speaker fund is Angela, and I'm gonna not say this right, but Rembelski is how I would think it's said, W-Y-R-E-M-B-E-L-S-K-I. She was the chief architect on the Michigan Central Restoration, and she works for Quinn Evans. So, she came and talked about what that, that job required in terms of engineering work and was delighted to have her speaker fee benefit the next generation of women engineers and math, you know, math, uh, strong women. So, anyway, so that's, again, a way the community supports what goes on in these schools with those kinds of donations. Small and large are welcome. And so, thank you to the Norfolk Women's Club for that, thinking of us.
I love that. Yeah.
I did remember one other, one other thing. I was happy to get my email today from the schools prompting the annual registration. Big, it's gonna be a big-money year for me with a senior. So, I'm gearing up for that annual registration and all of those fees. But, um, it was, I'm happy to see that those emails went out and, you know, transition weeks are next week. And so, it's lots of, lots of, uh, busyness in our, in our schools coming up in the next week here. So.
Yeah. Awesome.
On that note, if you'll indulge me for a second, because tomorrow morning, bright and early, I'm driving my son to college. And he was packing the cars. I was leaving the house. And I'm very excited for him, but I just, I just, this is our first year not having a student in MPS for a very, very long time. And I'm very sentimental and thankful to all the staff and teachers who got us to this point. He's super excited. I have obviously very mixed emotions. So, yeah, I just, you started it.
Yeah, but I made it through my part without time.
Yeah. But I'm just incredibly thankful. And this is a district in the community worth fighting for. And I feel like a lot of times right now, it's difficult in the news, and even when we have great moments like this one, this one is particularly bittersweet even on its own. But even when we have, you know, good, good moments, good things to highlight, it often is overshadowed by things like you discussed earlier in the meeting. But this is a place worth fighting for. So, thank you to everyone who got us to this point. And he's convinced that college is gonna be easy. And that's because he thinks he got it. He knows he got a great education at MPS, and he's heard from other alum that they have, you know, found the transition pretty well. So, that's due to a lot of hardworking staff. So.
Yeah, I would be glad to underscore that too, right, that I did not have a senior last year. I had a senior the year before, and my kiddo took a gap year. And, you know, it's a little-known fact that some kids, when they leave Norfolk High School, aren't totally ready to go off to college. And so, maybe they check out Schoolcraft. So, my daughter went to Schoolcraft, took two classes, and she got amazing feedback from the teachers over there. She didn't even read some of the feedback, because that's how my kid functions. She doesn't notice that sometimes. And one of the teachers said to her, it was an English professor, said, can I please use this first paper as an example for my students next year about how kids should write? And I was like, okay. She noticed this like at the end of the semester, so that was kind of funny. But just to underscore that, right, the value of the education that kids get from Norfolk is phenomenal and the care, and just the whole child experience is really phenomenal. And, and so, I feel for you that it is.
And you as well.
And me. And so, the good news is that my daughter is gonna go off to a college that's not living at home anymore. So, she's.
The name of the university.
Yeah, that is the name of the university. It also has a name called Calum's College. And she got a great scholarship from them, and she's very excited to go off and, you know, just carry on that experience of digging deep for education and wanting to do that. Some kids, I think parents get worried. I was talking to a student at the grief camp who did not grow up in Norfolk. And this, this kiddo was a, I guess, just, yeah, going into sophomore year at Central Michigan. And the student said, you know, I really wish my parents had supported me in a gap year. I really struggled at Central, and I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to finish. And I'm going back. I found my people finally, second semester, he said. But just that support from our community to say, it's okay to take a gap year. Kids grow up in all kinds of different timelines, and, and it's fine. So, it's, it's a big step to send a kid off to college, especially one that you drive with a packed car for a period of time, not just down the street. So, excited for you.
Thank you.
And, yeah, much gratitude to the, to the, all of our educators who inspire kids to want to do more than, than just a gap year that never ends.
Yes.
And to go off and do really great things. So, it is really a world of possibilities.
So, do all the fiery interviews you need to do, Dr. Webber.
And, and I'll tell you, thank you for saying that. But for those who've known me for a little bit, I think Rebecca's happy that I've kind of tempered myself in certain situations, so she doesn't have to pull me out of the fire. But there's no way I could authentically lead and be the person I am without a board that supports that and a team that puts up with it and educators who are worth fighting for. So, thank you.
I was gonna say, I appreciate that you took on that interview, right, that I think it is a huge disservice to our kids in Norfolk and to our kids everywhere in the state that to, I mean, we are in a, in a unique position in Norfolk that we have some pretty solid financial stability. Many districts do not have that. And so, how do you, I mean, we're at a place that, to plan a budget, and we have no idea what will be coming our way. We don't know which, which title programs we'll have to cut. We don't know which services we'll have to cut. It is a really precarious place for us to be in, and we value the staff that impact our kids' lives. It's, it's, it's a really difficult place for us to be in, and I really hope the legislation, legislators can figure out a way to come together and, and really solve this problem. It seems like it should not be so difficult. There are kids' lives at stake, kids' education, kids' futures.
True.
We could all talk about this for a long time. And a lot of people have a lot more things that they would probably wanna say. Is that a correct number? Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay. That should be 013, I think, for the motion. Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Dr. Campbell Voitel, will you take us to item number 14?
Yes, I'd be glad to. I bring motion 13, that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Public Act 267 of the Open Meetings Act under Section 8C negotiations.
Support. Okay. We have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel, supported by Ms. Stewart. We'll take a roll call vote for this.
Sure. Campbell Voitel?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Meyer, yes? Fraser?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Mara is absent?
McIntyre? Yes. All right. So, we'll go into closed session. We really don't know how long our closed session will last. And when we finish, we will come out and adjourn, gavel out, and that, there will not be any substantive conversation after that. Okay. All right. Thank you all.